Let us pray. Father God, we just come before you this evening and we're so grateful and thankful for this great city of Riverbank. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity tonight to gather here, Lord, and I'm asking, Lord, for unity to be across this great city. Lord, I pray for every business and every resident, Lord, that we would continue to do our part in making this city the great city that it is. Lord, I pray that, Lord, as we do our presentations tonight, that, Lord, there would just be that spirit of unity, that when we discuss business, Lord, we have an opportunity to share our concerns and differences. But, Lord, I just pray that at the end of the day, we trust this great council, Lord, that has been elected to move forward in what is best for this city. And that at that point, we would just come alongside and continue to do our part. Lord, we know that you have great plans for us here in Riverbank, and we're so grateful and thankful for it. In Jesus's name, amen.
I'll do the disclaimer. This meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision echo of the Ralph and Brown Act, California Government Code 54950. At sec, the federal Americans with disabilities, while this meeting is physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, member of the public may also participate and comment via Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of this agenda for participation information. Roll call.
Councilmember Odiva?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Ryan?
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations, starting with the Rock and Roll to School Day proclamation. So may I be joined by Armando Nunez and whoever else is coming on up with him? Good evening.
I get to do the presentation.
See, and then we're going to move on to presentations, starting with the Rock and Roll to School Day proclamation. So may I be joined by Armando Nunez and whoever else is coming on up with him? Good evening.
I get to do the presentation.
You want to read it? All right, good evening. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, Walk and Roll to School Day, October 12th, 2022. Whereas the City of Riverbank deems health and safety of its student as a primary concern, and whereas the lives of hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities took steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, and whereas the lack of physical activity plays a leading role in the rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into the daily routine. And whereas driving students to school by private vehicles contribute to traffic congestion and air pollution, and whereas it is an important role for parents and community is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trips to school each day, and the health and environmental risk related to physical inactivity and air pollution. Whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk and roll to school and evaluate walking and bicycle conditions in their communities. Now, therefore, the City of Riverbank City Council hereby proclaims Wednesday, October 12th, 2022, as Rock and Roll to School through the City of Riverbank, and as such encourages everyone to promote the safety and health of children today and every day. Sign today. We have Armando here, he is going to accept it, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and you have a speech prepared?
Sure.
Okay.
Members of the council and residents and neighbors, friends and neighbors of the community of Riverbank, we would like to invite you, first of all, to join us tomorrow morning in walking to California Avenue School, beginning at 7:15 at Castleburg Park. We're just promoting school safety, safe neighborhoods, and promoting the well-being of our students, along with promoting a school attendance. So these events are catered to serve our community. So thank you to the board, and we're honored to be here, thank you.
Anyone from the council wish to say anything, like mentioning the letter in front of you?
I have the letter. Okay, so we do have a letter that we are in support. We're sending this off to the Executive Director of Stanislaus Council of Governments and letting them know that we are sending a letter of support for the Eastern Stanislaus Regional Bicycle Pedestrian Path Project and Patterson Road Bicycle Pedestrian Connectivity Project. What we want to do is to make sure that we bring attention to our students that are walking from this area, going over to Enoch's, going to Byers, and just walking to school. And it is unsafe because they're walking in the streets. We have that two-lane road on Roselle, and it's unsafe. They're walking in the streets, there's no sidewalks, they're walking in the orchards. And so we just want to bring an attention that we would like to have a safe path for everyone to walk to school. So we're sending out a letter and letting them know how we feel about it, and we need their support for funding, so we can get that done. Thank you.
And that's a $10 million grant that we're going for, which is almost guaranteed. If we write good enough letters and say the proper prayers, we'll get that $10 million. Be able to do that safe route from Riverbank to Enoch's, Byers, U-Stack, because we have hundreds of students that are walking that, and you can see them dozens at a time walking in the orchard. So we're going to make sure that they fully understand how important this is and how earnest we are in achieving it. Okay, anybody? All right, thank you very much. I'm probably out of order, but I get to choose. The next one is Lights On After School. Do we have anybody?
It's actually also Armando Nunez.
Armando, get back up here. Anybody, there's a lot of kids here. You're not here to do the code enforcement.
I believe they're here for this particular proclamation.
And you have saved the date? All right, you're part of our group, come on. City of Riverbank Proclamation, Lights On After School. Whereas Lights On After School is a national celebration of after-school programs and promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas after-school programs provide safe, challenging, engaging, and enriching learning experience to help children and youth develop their social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills. And whereas after-school programs support working families by ensuring children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends. And whereas such programs help build stronger communities by involving students, parents, schools, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationship among youth, families, and adults. And whereas Riverbank Unified School District, Project Action After School Care Together in our neighborhoods, is recognized in our schools and community as a fundamental after-school program dedicated to providing extracurricular academic and recreational opportunities for student enrichment in a safe and nurturing environment, so students may become diverse individuals. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that Friday, October 21st, 2022, is Lights On After School within the City of Riverbank. Sign today, the 11th of October. Why don't I hand it to you? Because it is for you, right? I need pictures. Do we have the press? Okay, so why don't everyone gather around the proclamation? Very good. Now you get to speak again.
All right. Good evening again. Armando Nunez is the Program Grant Manager at Riverbank Unified for the After-School Programs. Currently, we are serving over 340 students in after-school programs across our district. Next Friday, we will be celebrating after-school programs throughout the nation. And so we're just one of the nationwide events that will be happening, and it will be happening at California Avenue from 3:00 to 5:30. Our programs are very important for our students, and we have a few students that are going to share a little bit about why they enjoy after-school program. But just want to say again, thank you for the acknowledgement on behalf of Riverbank Unified. We're honored to be here, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to tell you about why I like the after-school program. I like it because it provides a safe place for me to be after school. My parents aren't able to pick me up. And I also like it because it can host a lot of fun activities that me and my friends can do and enjoy. Thank you for your time. My name is Gabriela.
Very good, thank you.
Hello, my name is Priscilla Hernandez Garnica.
Oh, my name is Julian Hernandez Garnica.
And we attend a California Avenue After-School Program. We would like to invite the council members to our after-school, to our Lights On event. It will be on October 21st, starting at 3:00 PM. We hope to see you all there.
It's on my calendar already. Shall I get one? Thank you very much. All right, thank you, thank you all for your.
So we're going to be doing face painting, so make sure you stop and get your face painted. And planting seeds.
Michelle Garcia and Pat McCollough.
Sure, you can hit.
Oh, there's Michelle, come on up, Michelle.
And Pat, please come up as well.
Come on, Pat, Michelle. Yeah, I want you guys up here a little bit closer. This is a tough job you guys do, it truly is.
Yes, yes.
So one of the things that we do as we make developments, the way we kind of build them, making sure that once we get a development in, we have standards, and those standards have to be maintained. And keeping people from, well, it's my property, I can do whatever I want, is not what happens in a subdivision. You have to stick to rules and regulations. And these people have a very tough job making sure that our city maintains the aesthetic appeal that it has. So the City of Riverbank Proclamation, National Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas the State of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas code enforcement officers provide the safety, health, and welfare of the Riverbank citizens through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving the quality of life for the residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas the role of the many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years was jurisdiction increasing, relying on the expertise and training of code enforcement officers in their communities. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing community, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in Riverbank and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as code enforcement officers. And whereas the City of Riverbank wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve quality of life within our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank hereby proclaims the second week of October in 2022, annually thereafter, be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Riverbank. And be it further resolved that the City Council calls upon Riverbank residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the Neighborhood Improvement Officers who serve our code enforcement officers. Sign today, October 11th, 2022. No, that was me, I didn't do the code enforcement. Thank you. Thank you all.
Hello, everybody, council and staff and our citizens tonight. Wanted to take this opportunity to thank everybody for the appreciation. I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce my name, Michelle Garcia, and this is my new coworker, Patrick McCollough. We were lucky enough to get Patrick come on with us last November, and he's just been plugging along ever since. It's been a remarkable year. We've had over 1,000 cases already this year. We were about 680 last year at this time, so we've really had a lot. One of the reasons is where, when there's two of us out there, we're more noticeable. We get people flagging us down, also people getting their letters. Then they alert us to their neighbors that have the same issues. So it's been a pretty productive year. Patrick's been plugging away at our abandoned vehicles. He's really cleaned up a lot of our streets, and it's been an asset to the City of Riverbank. So thank you all so very much. We really appreciate this recognition, and we'll keep working harder for our citizens and our council and staff. Thank you so much.
Public comment. At this time, the members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment cannot be discussed or acted upon. Public comment, please.
Good evening, members of the community, mayor and council members and staff. My name is Bianca Lopez, I'm with Valley Improvement Projects. I'm co-founder of a nonprofit organization, and I'm here to invite you to an air quality community workshop. Before I give you the specifics, I'd like to give you some background information. VIP is a grassroots social and environmental justice organization based in Stanislaus County. And for a decade, our staff and volunteers have advocated for clean air, safe drinking water, sustainable agriculture, waste reduction, and healthy environments for disadvantaged community members. For the last two years, we have conducted air monitoring and collected data as part of our Stanislaus Community Air Monitoring Project, also known as SCAMP, which can be viewed at sjvair.com. We would like to work with our current SCAMP Steering Committee members, as well as other local community members, as yourselves, groups and leaders, to examine monitoring data, map sources of pollution in disadvantaged neighborhoods, and develop a Stanislaus Community Emissions Reduction Plan. And we're calling that SCURP. SCAMP SCURP? I had to say that. The overall goal of these projects is to continue to develop a notification system to alert community members of poor air quality, and to outline the local sources of air pollution and understand the potential effects of their emissions. And lastly, to empower community members to advocate for reductions in emissions, to limit exposure to harmful pollution, and improve public health, and assist communities in working with decision-makers like yourselves and relevant agencies in implementing an agreed-upon emissions reduction plan. So on Monday, October 17th, at 5:30 PM, at the St. Francis of Rome Parish Hall on 2827 Topeka Street, we will be hosting a community air quality workshop, where we will be able to show you some of the data that we've collected through our PM 2.5 monitor that is located on that site. We'll go over air quality 101, for folks who may not understand what are some of the pollutants that are in our community, we'll talk about the health effects, and then we'll review some of the stationary sources and non-stationary sources of pollutions or pollutants in our community. We invite you to attend. We invite community members to attend if you'd like to get more information about what our air quality looks like here in Stanislaus County, more specifically to the sources of pollution here locally and in our neighboring communities like Oakdale. And so on Monday, October 17th, at 5:30 PM, we'd love to see you there. I do have some flyers that I'll hand out to you, and then I will also email them to someone so that I can share the electronic format. And then if you would, please help us share and spread the word by providing that information on your website or any other social media sources that you currently use to disseminate information to the community members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council members and mayor and neighbors. I'm Betsy Walton, and I'm here to talk briefly about the Riverwalk project. I grew up on, at 417 Hoag Road. My folks in 1958 bought this ten-acre parcel, and there was an old farmhouse, still there, built in 1928, and we lived in that house, six kids, my mom and dad, two bedroom, one bath, while they were building their dream house. And once that was done, of course, we moved into that house, and that's where they raised their six kids. And my dad still lives there, my brother also lives there, and we all are there frequently to visit my dad. It's it's upsetting to me to know that there is discussion about a development that's going to go, possibly a proposed development called Riverwalk, happening below our farm and along the river bottom there, when we've spent our whole life looking at this gorgeous fertile land that's been growing crops for the world, when it seems to me there's so many other places to put houses and pavement on less fertile dirt. And that's just one of the issues, as I see it. The, I could go on and on about all the problems. There's going to be density, the traffic on McHenry is already just unbelievable. We can't even pull out of Hoag Road, it's crazy. I've seen accidents there. It's interesting, too, just lately, there's been a lot of talk and new research done on the flooding that goes on every 25, 50 years in the Central Valley. And with our climate issues and our climate changes, it's going to happen again. And that's right there at the river bottom, and that will be directly affected. But I think mainly it's the environmental injustice. But I think mainly it's the environmental injustice, which encompasses so many different things. I live in LA currently, although I'm here a lot to see my dad. He needs help. But I am in real estate, and I've worked with developers. I do mostly residential, but I've seen what happens, and I've had unfortunately a lot of negative experiences, and I've seen it around me. Developers say one thing, then they do something else, and promises are never kept. The density has always increased. The HOA rules are broken, and it goes on and on and on. So I can't speak to these developers. It's not fair to say what they would or wouldn't do, but I've just had a lot of experience. Yep, we're wrapping it now. I oppose. My whole family opposes the Riverwalk development, and I hope you will vote no when the environmental impact report comes out. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, council members. Jamie Eggers. I live at 7737 McHenry Avenue, Modesto, in the unincorporated area of Stanislaus County. You know me. I've been here many times opposing the Riverwalk development. I shared with you recently what a beautiful time of year this is when you live in the Ag area because many harvests are completed. There's still some to come, which mostly is the walnuts. We just did our last irrigation of the season, so it's very beautifully wet right now with us and all of our neighbors as we help recharge the groundwater in our area, and we look forward to the next season. This is not the area where homes and pavement should be placed. They should be placed on soils of lesser quality, not those that feed our country. So please, when the project comes before you, we urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Spinell. I live at 4737 Tully Road in Modesto. You may wonder why I'm here. I'm here to oppose Riverwalk. I don't live in Riverbank. I don't even live near the proposed development, but I'm here to support my neighbors, my friends, and the Ag community. My family has been farming on Tully Road for over 100 years. We're now in our fourth generation with our son and a grandbaby on the way, so it might be five generations. So we hope this can continue. And the only way it can continue is if we stop the development on our fertile soil here in the Central Valley. I'm proud to be a farmer. My family is proud to be farmers. My friends are proud to know farmers in this community. That's what brings people to the Central Valley. That's why we're here. I'm asking you to give the soil the respect it deserves. It's like none other soil in the world. And we know this. The Central Valley feeds the world. I'm sure you're thinking that this proposed development is only going to affect a few homeowners and landowners. Well, you're wrong. Once a development starts, another will come, and we keep chipping away at that fertile soil. It's inevitable. Just look around you. I'm asking you, I believe really what needs to be done is it has to be a change in mentality. It's, we have to change the mentality that it's just simply not okay to use up our fertile soil, that that's what has to happen. And so I'm asking you to be at the forefront of this change. Just think how exciting it would be for the city of Riverbank and this community to say no. We are not going to do that to our fertile soil. So I'm asking you to, if this comes to a vote at some point in time, please consider this and oppose the Riverwalk proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. No other comments?
I'll be brief. My name is Barney Eggers. I live at 7737 McHenry Avenue for the past 33 years. My wife and I both oppose Riverwalk. We have done intensive study on the proposal and don't see any positive outcomes, except maybe profit, profit margin for the developers. The other impacts are all negative, mostly traffic, air quality, which the mayor just spoke about, for the whole region. Let's not take this pocket of prime soil and prime farmland and pave it over and impact the aquifer and, you know, the recently the sewage treatment plant that's being expanded is probably necessary for what you have now, but the impacts on, on the whole region, if you take a, you know, a thousand-foot look at things like you were in a drone, it doesn't make sense to do this with prime farmland. And the whole thing is on the north, 1.8 miles is bordered by the Stanislaus River. It's a horrendous mistake to approve something like this, in my opinion. And I wouldn't want that on my legacy, legacy if I was in your seat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Saying done, we move forward to the consent calendar consisting of items 9-1, wave readings on 9-2, approval of the September 27th, 2022 City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board minutes. Item 9-3, a resolution to authorize fund to retrofit 1 Zerillo Park Tennis Court to a pickleball court. Item 9-4, a resolution authorizing the property owner, Sue Kuhn, Kuhn, to drill a portable, potable water drill located on the property of 6307 Snidderger Road, Riverbank, California. Is there anyone wishing to comment or pull any of these consent items? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on any of them? I bring it back to the council for consideration.
Make a motion. We approve the consent calendar as read. I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and second the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 11-1, a resolution authorizing the amendment to the master subscription agreement with Epic IO, formerly known as Intelsight LLC, to upgrade the camera equipment and software and authorizing a budget amendment for the increased amount. And a resolution to add additional site locations within the city of Riverbank, security cameras, and license plate readers, LPR, system, and authorizing a budget amendment for the additional cost.
Mayor and council, Chief Ed Reidenhour with the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department is here to present this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you know, our camera system in Riverbank has been extremely successful, simply implemented this in 2019. We've actually are leading the path of many other communities for regularly visited at our police department to look at our camera system, and it's been modeled time and time again. In the last couple of months ago, Epic IO, which was formerly Intelsight, had reached out to me saying, you know, hey, we think we can improve your system, which is always great, right? Technology changes very, very rapidly, and it's important that we stay on top of the technology. So we looked at our system as a whole and realized that a lot of our cameras are the, the pan tilt zoom type cameras. They work, they work great, but there are some, there are some problems with those. Some of the problems that we experience is if there's a power glitch or a server outage that sometimes they don't go back to home, and now they're, we're losing the data because they're pointing in the wrong direction. They also said, hey, we have better resolution cameras now. Technology again is there, and it's probably better that we put fixed cameras in places that are reading your license plates versus the pan tilt zooms. So we kind of sat together and redesigned the entire system to be better suited for Riverbank that kind of plugs some of the holes we have now, replacing the pan tilt zooms with fixed cameras and putting the pan tilt zooms more over intersections where you can look around, look at nearby schools if there's a problem, kind of can react to things or focus on problems that are maybe short-term in, in nature around. So that's going to be one option you're going to see as well tonight. The second option was to add two additional locations. So those locations, there's two of them. The first one was Castleburg Park. We've been trying to get that side up and running now for quite some time. There were some issues with the power, but I think we have that worked out now. So that's one of the options you'll see tonight. And the second option is going to be the, the southeast area of town where we lack camera system, and that's going to be at Claus and Clarabelle. That's a major thoroughfare, right, going forward? So we've added an option to capture that data that we're, we're missing. So I'd like to introduce LPDO with Epic IO. He has a presentation tonight to kind of talk about the new cameras, new software, show you the layout of these locations, and provide you guys with the options.
May I just ask a question of you, chief?
Yes.
This system, what's the benefit for, for you and your staffing?
So our cameras are used pretty much daily by our staff, right? Whether it's, we're using it to solve hit-and-run collisions. We've located missing persons with the systems. We catch speeders that are like, not speeders, just speeding, but people that are driving recklessly, tearing up our streets, creating the sideshows that we see throughout town that are super dangerous and unsafe. We've stopped burglaries, robberies, tracking suspects. The system is quite used regularly, and for our guys, they think it's invaluable. If we didn't have this system, I think it would be losing like a couple of staff for us is essentially what it doubles as because it has those eyes on there. And it's important that our residents know that this is not an Overwatch system that we're constantly looking at and monitoring. We don't, we don't have time to sit there and stare at cameras all day, but they're there to go back and solve crime, to be reactive. But one thing you'll see tonight, too, part of the new system, it also has some analytics that he'll go deep into that can help with planning for streets, planning for pedestrian counts, vehicle counts, air quality sensors, which we have now, but now we can capture all that data into one system.
Okay. Does residents have the ability to have input or at least knowledge of what's going on with either the camera systems or some of the other programs related to this?
They do. So they'll be able to, I believe they can see the air quality sensors, which I think is what probably the most important for them to be able to see. But as far as the, the other data, they reach out that based upon the case that they may be involved in. I do, I do talk to residents, you know, when a new camera goes in the area, like, hey, this is what the camera looks like. People have asked me, hey, is it looking at my house? I'm like, it's not. I can show them examples that it's not. It's looking at public places.
Okay. I was hoping you say something else.
Yeah.
Project Resolve?
Oh, you want to, so one of the things mayor's going to bring is Project Resolve, right? So Project Resolve, if everybody's not aware of that, it's, it's a community-based program that's between law, local law enforcement and community leaders from across Stanislaus County. I've been part of Project Resolve now for the last few years. We meet quarterly, and we talk about issues going on throughout Stanislaus County, throughout our communities, how we can better build relationships between law enforcement and our communities, and how our communities can better build relationships with us. So vice versa, we're learning from the community what they want to see, and we're also help educate the community from what we see from our perspective, and we're bridging those gaps. I do think that this camera system falls in part of that because it's a part of building trust with our community, is part of going back and showing we are here to protect you, and this is how we're doing it. And we do bring up these kind of topics during those meetings and evolve it, right? One of the issues that come up now is, that I brought up recently, was police officers back in schools, right? That's something that's kind of new again, even though it was very much in place years ago. It's now becoming a regular, right? So the sheriff's office now has many schools as part of school resource officers. I know Riverbank's looking at the same thing. So one idea I proposed through Project Resolve was like, let's go reach out to the students and see what they feel like. So we're actually starting a program in Riverbank, actually, at the high school. We're going to have an independent party that's going to go to the school and meet with different groups of students that represent different areas, different walks of life, different lived experiences, to get feedback from them, to bring data that I can then also bring back and share with you guys as well, to see what the, the school kids feel about law enforcement on their campus. So that's, this is just another example of part of Project Resolve, some of the things we're doing, and that's one of the things coming up as well.
Thank you. Yeah, you have to make it, all right? Just a second.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, one, one more. Go ahead.
Okay.
I thought you were going to make a couple.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, council members and, and community citizens. My name is LPDO Compress. I am the sales director for Epic IO here in the West. We are known as Epic IO now. Let me just go back a few here. But we've been, we've been in business for over 20 years in this area, founded by two local guys. Our first office was headquartered right here out of Series, California. Now we are headquartered out of Fort Bills. We've grown a lot. We're a national company. But you might have heard of us before as Intelsight. All right, that's the same company. We're now Epic IO. Just wanted to point out, one of the big values that we bring is that we are complete solution. I deal directly with the chief. He needs something. He works directly with LPDO. We do partner with a bunch of folks to make it all happen, but I'm your local point of contact. That's why I'm here today. I just wanted to highlight some of our customers in the area. The yellow guys are some of the folks that you guys should be familiar with. We just got approved by the city of Series to roll out a, a big, across all of their parks. We also work with the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department across, you know, three cities today. So they're, they're using our system. And as you can see, others, Oakdale, the city of Modesto. So we've been, you know, we're familiar. We've been working with you guys for a long time, and we've been delivering. So I'm going to cover, the next two slides are going to go into two, two, kind of two phases of the proposal. The first phase is an equipment refresh of pretty much what the existing system that's out today. It's, we're not just going out there and replacing stuff. We worked extensively with the chief to go over every single location and ensure that we're not just taking a camera down, putting one up. We're strategically placing them to capture the LPR information that we need, and it's, it's just much better, much improved technology. We're also adding a total of three UIGs, or basically three unique sites, in a total of 10 camera views to the, to the original setup. So it's, it's not just the same thing. You're also going to get more cameras, more locations. What, in, in total, what this is going to do, it's going to bring our total UIG or, or site count to 20, 20 unique sites, and you guys will have 46 cameras across these different sites. Today, the way that this works in terms of finances, the city's paying about $97,400 a year for the existing system. This would increase to $111,000 a year for the complete system, or about $1,200 a month. And there would be a one-time charge of about $15,750. That includes all of the shipping and the, all of the installation, because we're going to go out to every site. We have local folks that are actually going to be, we've been working with you guys for a long time to go out there and make sure the, the work is done correctly. So this is the first phase of the proposal. The next phase is adding Clarabelle and Claus and Castleburg Park. To do that, we would increase the, 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 the total to $19,000 per year extra with a one-time cost of $3,500 for installation and shipping. So if, if we look at the proposal I just mentioned on the last page and the proposal on this page, if we adopted both, you guys are looking at about $130,000 a year compared to 97 that you're paying today. So the difference is about $2,700 per month with a one-time charge of $19,000 for everything. So at a high level, this is your cost. Now, the chief touched on some of the, the additional things of our system. First, I'm going to walk through all of the sites and kind of what we're doing, and then really show you the value of, of, of our new software. So this is the first site. This is Squirewell's Way. On this site, we're adding a total, see how we are basically aligning the cameras differently to better capture the LPR data, and we're adding one total net new view to this intersection. The next is Oakdale Road. Again, we are realigning everything and adding one total net new camera. This one is Clarabelle Road and Oakdale Road. Again, realigning everything to much better. We only had basically two corners here with cameras. Now we're putting them on every corner and adding two total cameras to, to get a better view. The next site is Patterson Road. On this side, we're just, pretty much, there was one camera there before. We're adding two. We're adding a fixed camera to capture the license plates as well as a PTZ camera to be able to go in there and move it around. The next site is Patterson Road and Claus. Again, we're adding a total net new, one new view to this intersection, and, you know, just realigning everything to, to better capture the data. The last one here is The last one here is, and I have two more, Clarabelle Road and Roosevelt Avenue. On this one, we're adding two total net new cameras. And just realigning again all of the intersections. And I believe this is the last one. This is Patterson Road and Calendar Avenue. Again, you know, we only had cameras kind of on one pole here. So if, if a vehicle was turning, you know, it, we need to be able to view a license plate in order to capture it. So if a vehicle is turning and another car is going the other way, that's what was blocking us in the past. This layout that I just went through enables us to really capture every lane and ensure that our, our success rate is much higher than it is today. This is a skate park. We're adding one total net new camera to this location. So very quickly, I will walk through the two new proposed sites. This is Clarabelle and Klaus Road. As you can see here, we have complete coverage. There's a total of five cameras capturing every lane as well as a PTC capturing kind of the, 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 the stuff that's going on at the intersection. This is adding Castleburg Park. As the chief noted, we've been working on this site for a long time, but we finally figured out the power and are able to capture license plate recognition for the folks that are coming into the parking lot, ensure that area of the park is safe as well as watching the gazebo and the play area as well. So this is a complete total of all of the sites that we're changing and all of the sites that we're, we're adding. So I'm going to walk into, walk through really the, the, the value of the system because it's not just about security. I'm going to show you how the city can get a lot more insights to really plan out the future as the city grows and, and make decisions based off of data, not based off of somebody's gut or somebody's feeling. So first I'm going to walk through, this is a video. It's a short video that walks through the capabilities of our system. This is what you guys will have access to. So this first part is going to walk through our intersection. So we're not just capturing the video there at the side 24/7 anytime we notice a car. We're capturing every car, every bicycle, every bus, and we're able to give you a historical view of how busy that, that intersection was over a week, over a day, over a month, and we keep that information forever. So you see how your city is growing? This is probably one of the features that gets used the most. It's very intuitive. It's very easy to use. As you can see, you can search by model, make, color of the car or just the time or a location. So extremely easy. And this is, by the way, this is accessible from any PC really, no, no software needed. This is kind of a dispatch view. This is a running list that you can have up in the station. And we're able to tie into national data to get a list of stolen vehicles, amber alerts, that type of information. So if one of those cars gets pinged, you'll get an alert on your, on your screen that we just captured that vehicle. This is talking about besides the national list that you could leverage, the chief could make his own list. So let's say, you know, not, not for something bad happening, but let's say, hey, somebody's lost. You know, we had an incident with a, an elderly person. They left the house, then the people were concerned because this person didn't really know their way around. They gave the license plate information to the police and they were able to find the person within 20 minutes, right? Because we're able to do that. So that, that's you, you guys saw some of the, the really valuable features. This is a dashboard view. So as the chief logs in, this is how you'll be able to see all of the locations from a single pane of glass. And then you could dive deeper in there to, to actually look at the data. This is what we really do as a company. So we're really not a camera vendor. We don't really sell hardware. What we really what we really are about is artificial intelligence and IOT. So this is showing what our system really does is we, this is our Monday football lines, a slide. I'll let the video play here for a second, but all of these lines that you're seeing drawn out here, this is how we, how we were able to capture what's a bicycle, what's a car, what's a vehicle? And I'll, I'll show you how this is visualized in our system. So this particular intersection is at the University of South Florida. And what they were interested in was they had a lot of accidents here. They had pedestrians getting hit. They want to understand, hey, do we need to change the timing of the lights? What's going on here? So with, with, with all of this stuff that's going on here, we're able to tell them if people are jaywalking. We're able to tie this into digital signage to actually make, make a loud noise or make a sound when we notice a vehicle and a pedestrian are going to hit. And using this data that they, they basically figured out, hey, how, how long is the person going to wait there before they just say, you know what? I'm crossing the street anyway. And they're very able to tune the system and they keep it there because over time, right? Data changes and they're able to finally adjust everything here to make it safer.
Sorry to interrupt.
Did you just say that the system makes a noise before there's an impact?
That's part of it. Yeah, we can, we can tie, we can tie stuff like that into it. Basically, it's that universal IOT gateway where it gets deployed there at the edge, the thing that's powering the cameras. We are also able to deploy sensors like the air quality sensor stuff. All of that talks to the same system. So we have actually deployed this stuff. We have stuff done with, done big with the carriers where we're seeing a car, we're seeing a person. We can make a loud noise because some people are on their phones usually. That's what, that's what the issue is really. So using those Monday lines that you guys just saw on the last screen, as we capture, th- this is how we visualize that data. So we show you this on a single pane of glass and we can create custom views, right? So I'm gonna say the guys that maybe are interested in this information, maybe they're not with the police department. They're a different part of the city, traffic engineering. We can create a custom view, nothing extra. This is all part of the same system. And we could show the guys that are interested in that data, the, the data that's pertinent to them. So this is the visualization of that. This is one of the really neat features. We can also add this to intersections where we are able to tie in speakers and actually have it a canned message. We usually do this at parks. Somebody shows up at the park, we detect it's a person. Our AI, our system that can detect that in real time. So we know it's a person and will automatically start a, start a, a message. Thank you for visiting our park. We're closed right now. Police has been dispatched. And we can also send a message to the police in real time with a little picture of what just happened. Besides the canned message, you can even have this thing call the chief. I'm not sure. You don't want to get a call at three o'clock in the morning, but we can have this call anybody. We can have it called anybody that wants it. It'll call your cell phone and you can have a two-way conversation with somebody right from the system. So it's, it's a, it adds a lot more value again than just being able to watch video. I think this is, I didn't plan this. Obviously, I didn't know we were going to hear about the air quality sensor issue. But I just wanted to show you how we are able to tie all the data into one pane of glass. So this is, you guys have this deployed today. Th- there's air quality sensors, but we can really, it's really deploy this across the city. And again, in real time, alert you when all of these thresholds on the, on the right there, what they mean and capture other stuff too, temperature, humidity, anything that you guys are really interested in capturing. So I think that's the end of the presentation and I hope I answered a lot of questions, but please let me know if you guys have any, anything in particular.
Questions. Realistically, out of the 46 proposed cameras, I would like to see the air qualities in more cameras throughout the city. How many of those can we? Out of the 46, how many can we put?
So the, the sense, we could put them anywhere. They, they, they talk to not the cameras, they talk to the, the UIGs or the universal IOT gateways. I think there's 23 on the second, 23 unique of those.
Okay.
So those would be kind of, they would need to be deployed within a certain range of that, but we're talking about like within miles even.
Got it.
Right? They operate on this very low band technology. That's, it's kind of like cellular, but that's how they talk wirelessly.
And so, so we're, this is a five-year contract. So kind of, kind of talk to us about our, our refresh options in like three years, right? We're 2019. We're three, three years down the road. We're refreshing the whole system here. So kind of give us an idea three years into the five-year contract. What is that going to look for?
So part of, in why we've been, we've been working together on this is this is, this five-year agreement, we are responsible to maintain all of the hardware and all of the software during that. That all-in price covers, a camera goes down, we'll send you a brand-new camera. Component of that UIG, this thing is like a base, like a $10,000 computer that we build that can be out left in the desert or in the snow. Any, any piece in there missed brakes or anything, we send you, we ship you a new one.
So like, like the chief said, technology changes, right? In three years, this could be a whole new thing, right? So would we have that option of to refresh it again at no cost?
A hundred, every time a component goes bad, let's say this is a five-year agreement, we will replace it with the best possible thing at that moment that we have. It is the latest and greatest, like if, you know, whatever camera, that's the latest and greatest.
Is this going to, the system, is it going to be able to show us most of our schools and what's going on outside those schools?
I don't believe, go ahead, chief.
I, I can touch on that. So right now, the, the sites that are covering the schools is mainly the high school. There's actually a camera there. That camera currently today only reads license plates until we choose to move it to watch the school with the refresh system that we're actually dedicating cameras to actually just read plates. It still have one that's kind of primarily over the intersection, but it has a preset home function, which is the high school, right? So if something happens, we can instantly click, you know, Riverbank High School, the camera immediately turns to that location. Now gives us a, an ability to see the entire campus and zoom around it. The other school that we can currently see right now is the back of Cardoza School. We can see the whole playground. We can actually see the campus. So that is one of the things we looked at is if there's a location that's near a school, we try to have that option in place now because it's so valuable to us. But as we move forward, those are good sites to identify as well as some of our other parks that we will also like to add cameras to.
You know, there's a camera on Topica and Patterson. And you'll probably replace that camera with it and it should be able to pick up, I would think, something with the new zoom that you have at the language school, I would think.
Yeah.
Is that a possibility?
Yeah.
I have a big concern about the schools with what's been going on with them. And I don't have to say much about it because everybody's heard it. And I want to see the safety there for those also.
Yeah, thank you.
I could be wrong, but is the, the camera for Castleburg Park that's being proposed, is it the only one facing a park? And could you tell me a little more about that, the history on why you've been working on it?
So we also have the community center, Veterans Park as well. We have the gazebo covered there as well as the pool area. We also originally at one point identified having the location over at Scout Hall Park. But because the, the population slowed down there, we chose to move to Castleburg Park because that playground is so regularly used by the public. It has a large amount of visitors. I think it's important that it provides a safe place that the public can come and whether they're doing online social media exchange or something they sold, or they just know that they can come to the park with their families and know they're safe and knowing if something happens, then it's recorded. Also, we've had a lot of vandalism there at the gazebo and the bathrooms. So that'll help solve some of those cases as well.
Chief, it looked like in one of the slides, several slides ago, where there is an upgrade to Patterson and Calendar. And it looks like it's going to cover more of the area, but I didn't see like the visual lines to show that it's going to cover that right-hand turn. So I just want to make sure that that is covered.
So that's one of the things when we looked at the site right now, a lot of our cameras are on one side of the street because they're, they were limited to being to a box, the UIG, which has the brains in there that L P D O just spoke about. What we're doing now is a lot of the intersections that we've had the ability and we have Michael and his team help us and go out and look at the ability to run cap five cable through existing conduit. So we can now bridge a camera to the other side of the street, which gets a better view, be able to have a better view of that cars turning that corner, for example. That's one of the areas that we struggle at now because it's on a curve and we're trying to read the license plates from across the street at a weird angle. So that's what most of the intersections where the cameras are being moved is for exactly that reason, to get a better angle and view. And we also look at whether you're leaving an intersection or coming to an intersection and thinking as you leave an intersection, you have more of a gap between cars. So we set it on that side of the intersection. The engineers all provided this insight. One of the other areas we have a lot of problem is over at Terminal in Kentucky. That's another one where the camera system is on one side of the street, one location. And we struggle at catching some of the vehicles going in certain directions at a location just because of where they're currently mounted. So that was all looked at and redesigned with this project to make it better.
Okay, thanks. And the other thing was the talking camera. I'm just laughing because I know they were scared the beebies out of me. But anyway, so they call you, not me. So, thank you.
It's not just license plate readers is what we're doing. We're doing traffic analysis and how to make it safer. And when it comes time for the county saying, well, you know, we need to do a traffic study. We have a more detailed traffic study than what the county currently has the capabilities of doing. And that gives you a, a greater analysis for, you know, number of pedestrians walking on Roselle across Clarabelle going towards schools. So all of that would be, is, is extremely useful. But traffic violations, there should be a tie with current. This morning I saw two cars driving down Westgate. One on each side of the divide racing. So things like that, we'll have to start identifying and alerting the patrols that are, are you know, out there at, at the night. I, I still would like to see, and I know we're not going to do it. So this is just something I would like to do. Is if they are speeding, we capture that and we say, we caught you. Don't do it again. And then we're, we're telling them that we are alerting them. I know we're doing that with the coasters, drifters, what are others, but you know, that's something I think that we should consider. But I know we did not actually see it, therefore we cannot issue a violation. I know the rules, dang it. Anyway, is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this? Saying, then I bring it back to the council for either continued discussion or for consideration of two resolutions.
So I'll make a motion to approve both resolutions.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve both resolutions and a second. Roll call, please. Do you have to do a call for each resolution?
No.
Okay.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
By Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion pass five zero.
Thank you. And thank you very much. Every time we do something with those camera systems, some, one of the other cities wants to also do that. So I'm, I'm not asking for kickbacks, but I would like special consideration as we expand. I said, look at this new system. Your salesman.
I really appreciate your time, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. All right, we'll continue on with staff comments.
So mayor and council, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of the city staff that worked this weekend to make sure that things ran as smoothly as possible at our cheese and wine, particularly Sue and all of her Parks and Recreation staff who spent many, many hours before, during and after the event to make sure that, that everything ran as smooth as possible. And in addition to Tammy El Cantor in finance to make sure that everything was working properly in terms of, you know, fund collections and other miscellaneous items that she was able to assist with. So thank you to, to staff for that. We did want to make mention that our turf replacement program funds have been reserved for the maximum that was allowed by the city council. So at this time, any new applications that are being accepted will be placed on the waitlist. In the event any of those approved applications happen to fall through. And that is all from staff today.
Very good. Councilmember Hernandez, please.
Yeah, I guess I had another question about project was resolved if possible. You mentioned that there's going to be some feedback from the high school. You mentioned that there's going to be some feedback from the high schools. And, yeah, maybe, thank you. And I just wanted to know who's conducting it, is it purely qualitative or what kind of feedback you're getting?
So it's Kate, her name's Kate Trumpeter. She has a consulting company that basically, she's, she's kind of like the coordinator behind Project Resolve, that kind of gets everybody on the same page. She's very curious and acquisitive about these issues between law enforcement, the community, and the community and law enforcement, how to bridge the gaps. And she would be the one that's going to be on-site. We've spoken with the, the school superintendent as well as the principal and got on board him. And one of the things she was very important about is she wanted to make sure she had different groups of students that have different lived experiences because you may have different results in their answers.
Thank you. And then, yeah, the, I was able to catch Sunday's Cheese and Wine Festival, and I want to apologize, like, code switching did not work when I was trying to translate, but it's important, you know, to me and I know the rest of the council that we translate wherever possible. So I want to ensure that it's included, at least in the budget, to reassure that the translation is happening for, for these populations, you know, especially with it being a majority Hispanic and Latino in the years moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Uribe?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a great time at the Cheese and Wine Festival, spent Saturday fundraising with Reverend Randy, our Vice Mayor, residents, John Pimentel. It was a great day. Got to spend some time with the daughter on Sunday, too, taking her over to the bounce house and stuff like that. So I'm looking forward to, you know, continuing this tradition and seeing where it kind of goes. I'll be, I'll be taking a updated tour of Metis with Vice President of Projects, Jared Holis, just to kind of get a full update. He says a lot of things have changed in a couple months, so I want to take another tour. So that's been scheduled. I'll be, I will be attending the Lights On After School Celebration, it's already in my calendar, and looking forward to the Dia de los Muertos on 10/28. And I will be taking three-day vacation for my birthday next week. So that's the 17th, 18th, and 19th, and so I apologize, I wish I could be at the Air Quality Community Workshop, super important. But I will be at Disneyland with the little one, celebrating my birthday. So my phone will be turned off. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Just want to let everyone know that I did attend the Homeless Coalition meeting that was presented by Stanislaus County Office of Education. And it was noted that there were 500 youth that dropped out of Stanislaus County schools this year. And key objectives for this group are to encourage the use of our local ARPA funds and at all levels, and make sure that there's collaboration, the inclusion of migrants and refugees, and also to be mindful of humanity efforts for housing, warm clothes and food since the weather will be changing shortly, and help families to adopt for readiness of job openings. I really enjoyed the dancing horses, being a judge, it was a lot of fun, I'd never done anything like that before. And all of the horses were so beautiful, so it was very hard to make a decision. And then thank you to the city staff for their efforts at the Cheese and Wine, and Tammy, a special thank you to you. And there will be a Shaw meeting tomorrow at 5:30 at 1010 10th Street in Modesto, in the basement, the council chambers. And Walk and Roll to School Day tomorrow, I will be at Castleburg Park at 7:15 a.m. if anybody wants to join me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to say, it's getting dark earlier, and it's also cooler in the morning, and sunlight isn't quite there as much. And I want to caution everybody that's bringing their children to school because a lot of times they're in a big hurry, and certain schools in our area have real traffic jams, and sometimes I've seen things that aren't safe. So when you're taking your child to school, remember, you may need to get to work, but try to be safe because I've seen several times where, I live right by the Charter School, and I've seen several times where there's almost been accidents because people have gone too fast. So think safety for the kids, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I want, first off, thank the staff for what they've done over this last year, the 100th, and even with the Cheese and Wine. Truly impressive the way your staff has handled each event, and this event here is none. No, I couldn't see a flaw. We may need to change things, but as, as we change, but the event was flawless. And I want to, I also appreciate the Riverbank Police Services for the way that they handled the individuals who were out there not to have fun but to disturb. Again, thank you, Chief, and for all you've, you've done. Code enforcement is a tough job, but there's a lot of things out there that we need to continue to, point out to the residents and how they can improve their, their lot. One of the items I, we keep seeing is the encroachments. And it's, well, he's done it, so I can do it, you can't tell me I can't. So there has to be some way that we can enforce it or change how we're addressing it. I have one other, but I think I'll just leave that. Okay, with that, we're going to go into closed session, consistent of item 13.1. Conference was labor negotiator pursuant to government code, section 54957.6. Agency representative, city manager, Marisol Garcia. Employee organization, the Riverbank Mid-Management Employee Association. At this time, anyone from the public has the ability to address these actions. But for three minutes, is there anyone? Saying none, we're now adjourned to closed session. Thank you.